Commissioner Zubor, would you call the roll, please?
I thought you'd never ask. Yes. Commissioner Ocharia, Commissioner Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Commissioner Okon.
Here.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Zubor here, and Chairman Green.
Here.
And Commissioner Bennett is, again, not with us this evening.
Okay, and we have our community planners, Jeff Goulet and Patrick Sloan with us, and we have our audience, welcome to everybody, and those ultimately who will see us on cable TV. We met last, right here, on June 15th, and we have minutes of that meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All right, got a motion to approve the June 15th minutes by Commissioner Zubor, and support by Commissioner Egenberger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, our agenda tonight consists of five projects, three of which are public hearings, and as many of you may know, public hearings are just that, that we invite comment, concerns, or questions for the project sponsors and the commission concerning that project. And if you do decide to get up, we do need that you give your name and your home address, and also fill out one of our cards, so that we know exactly who made what comment. That said, let's get on with the first public hearing. It is the Erie Investments rezoning, where we're considering a rezoning of, from general industrial to light industrial, for property which is located on the south side of Michigan Avenue between Lilly and Hagerty Roads. Jeff, could you give more detail?
Yes, this is a rezoning for about 3.69 acres. This was an existing warehouse on Michigan Avenue, is now the home to Car Cave on Michigan Avenue, which is basically a rental facility for people who own classic cars, for them to be able to store their cars there and visit their cars and take their cars out. The applicant would like the ability to obtain a broker's license.
I'm sorry, Jeff, could you please speak in the microphone? It's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry. So, we've got monitors up here, so hopefully that helps. The applicant would like the ability to obtain a broker's license from the state of Michigan, which requires a special land use in the LI district, thus the need to rezone from general industrial to light industrial. So the request is consistent with the future land use, mixed-use policies for the Michigan Avenue corridor, which recommend light industrial on the south side of Michigan Avenue. So this is pretty straightforward. If the board approves the rezoning from general industrial to light industrial, he'll be back with a special land use request to allow some minor brokering activity to occur out of the building at a later date. So, the applicant should be here to answer any questions. Michael, you here? Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Sorry, I was adjusting my hearing aids. I'm having trouble hearing you with the mask and everything. Yes, sir. Welcome.
For Erie, so that's why. If you had any questions. Sorry.
So, that's all the staff has on this item?
Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Support.
All right, got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor, and support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are here. Anything further to add on this project from the commission, or from the project sponsor? Nothing?
Any public?
Go right to the audience. Do I hear any, see anybody that wants to get up and speak on this?
Move to close the public hearing?
Support.
All right, we got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Engel, and support by Commissioner Zubor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's start down here with Commissioner Ocharia. Any comments or concerns?
No, I have no questions.
Commissioner Graham Hudak.
No, but it looks good what we read in the packet, thank you.
Commissioner Zubor.
I have no problem with this.
And Commissioner Engel.
I'm all set.
As am I, and Commissioner Perkins?
All good.
Commissioner Egenberger?
All fine with it.
Commissioner Okon?
All set.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the request to rezone parcels number 137990028000 to 137990030000, from GI, General Industrial, to LI, Light Industrial District.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel, and support by Commissioner Zubor. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Ocharia.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Jeff, what's next for this project?
The first reading will be going to the board later this month, that requires two readings of the board to amend the ordinance, so we'll let the project sponsor know when he's on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Our second agenda item of the evening is the Berkshire Apartments Preliminary PDD, where we're considering a PDD, that's a planned development district, for property which is located north of Salts and west of Canton Center Road. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal is for Berkshire Apartments. The proposal is a planned development district, and this is the first step in the planned development process. This is a preliminary planned development district. Should it be recommended by the planning commission and approved by the board, they would then continue to their final planned development district application, so there's a two-step process. For this project, the applicant proposes to locate 172 apartment units on approximately 24.63 acres, on the north side of Salts Road, west of Waterside Road, which is also west of Canton Center Road. The project density of almost seven residential units per acre is less than the maximum density of eight units per acre, recommended by the comprehensive plan and allowed under the current R6 zoning district. The site will have four points of access, from Salts Road to the south, from an extension of Greystone Lane to the northeast, and two connecting roads to Waterside Road to the east. All buildings in the proposed development will be two stories. For a little bit of history about this site, this proposed site was part of the original Apartments at Cambridge PD, which was approved in 1998 for 599 residential units, and included the areas now known as the Traditions of Cambridge and the Glens of Cambridge. At the time, only the Traditions of Cambridge was constructed for 236 residential condominium units, and the remaining areas of that PD had expired. However, much of that infrastructure that's underground today was installed on the Berkshire site, which includes water lines, sanitary lines, storm sewer lines, and curb cuts from Waterside Road. More recently, in 2017, a planned development district was approved for the Glens at Cambridge, for 92 residential condominium units, at the northwest corner of Canton Center Road and Salts Road. The proposed Berkshire Apartments PD is for the remainder of the land on the west side of the original site. If the Berkshire Apartments' planned development is approved for the proposed 172 residential units, the total number of residential units for all three developments will be 500, which is 99 fewer units that then was approved in the original Apartments at Cambridge in Each planned development district is required to demonstrate definite benefits to the community, and the following definite benefits are proposed. First, maintaining almost 50% of the site as open space, which exceeds the 25% open space minimum. Second, completing the Cambridge planned development in a consistent and compatible manner, including the architectural design, attached two-car garages, a reduction in the total number of residential units from the original PD. And third, a connection and additional parking for the community center on the west side of Waterside Road. Additionally, the proposed layouts of the buildings in the current Berkshire proposal is based on the locations of the existing infrastructure on the site, and the previous planned development back in 1998. We have several items in our analysis that we touch on in terms of the modifications, the architecture, and some of the development that would take place in the future at site plan review. So, I want to limit what I want to say about the analysis on page two, to the traffic impact. The project sponsor has submitted a traffic impact assessment, which indicates some deficiencies in the area. Farther away, there's a deficiency at Canton Center Road and Ford Road during the AM and PM peak hours. There is also a deficiency at the intersection of Stonewood Road and Canton Center Road, in the AM peak hour only, and only on eastbound Stonewood Road. Stonewood Road goes through the Cambridge development to the east, and it connects to Canton Center Road, so that's the more important intersection. For the intersection of Canton Center Road and Ford Road, the impact assessment recommends optimization of signal timing, and recommends MDOT incorporating the intersection improvements to its future improvements of Ford Road. For the deficiency for eastbound Stonewood at Canton Center Road, the impact analysis recommends widening the eastbound Boulevard lane of Stonewood Road by only two to four feet, to allow for a dedicated right and left turn lane. The project sponsor intends to widen the eastbound Boulevard lane of Stonewood Road, which we recommend as a condition of preliminary planned development approval. Currently, although the eastbound Boulevard lane of Stonewood Road is 20 feet wide, it's only designed for one lane. Sometimes during the rush hour, you'll see that people will make two lanes, one going right, one going left. The widening of two to four feet will allow for dedicated lanes for left and right. So, with that, our recommendation is preliminary approval of the planned development district, subject to widening the eastbound Boulevard lane of Stonewood Road by two to four feet, to allow for dedicated right and left turn lanes at Canton Center Road, in accordance with the recommendation of the traffic impact analysis. That concludes our report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick.
Mr. Chairman, move to open the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we got a motion to open the public hearing on this project by Commissioner Zubor, and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have any project sponsorship to comment? Or no? Patrick?
Mr. Chairman, James Galbraith, for the sponsor of the project, MM Beck, or, excuse me, MM Canton Center. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Patrick's done a great job of describing the last element to be developed within the original Traditions PUD from 22 years ago. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna go right to the audience. Any comments, concerns, or questions from the audience? Speak now?
Oh, is this on?
Oh, yes, sir.
Mike's on? Okay. My name is Jeffrey Harris. I stay at 1540 Hingery in Canton. This development comes right into my backyard. My wife and the family, we want to know the security. How's the layout for the security?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question on that?
How's the layout for the security? My home backs up right at the tree line.
You're to the west of it?
I'm to, yes.
Great. He's right here in.
I'm the subdivision, yep.
One of those, okay.
I'm the subdivision that's right behind it. The top left corner.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so I'm like the third house, fourth house.
Okay.
Number 27, 26, somewhere around in there. I just want to know the security for, you know, for my family, grandkids.
Okay, so in terms of, like, buffering, or?
Yes, is it gonna be a wall, is it trees, or how is it gonna be?
Patrick, could you explain the buffering in that area?
There will be a buffer on the PD plan in this particular area. It doesn't have the dimensions here, but I can try to find a part of the plan that will have the dimension of the side yard setback. But from the road to the lot line, there will be a buffer, and?
How tall is the buffer?
It'll just take a moment for the resolution to come in, it's a pretty large packet.
Okay.
It's roughly a 30-foot wide buffer, and at the time of site plan review, which would be in the future, at that point is when we would look at the landscape plan in detail, and iron out some of the fine points. So, they may have a landscape plan that meets the ordinance, but sometimes they go, have to go above and beyond when it comes to the point of designing it.
But there will not be a wall in between this project and the subdivision, which I think is where the gentleman was questioning? Is that correct? Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
There will not be a wall. No, we buffer, when we have residential to residential, we will buffer with landscaping, berms, natural types of features like that, but we don't usually put walls between communities.
Okay. Yeah, that's my concern. Okay, thanks a lot.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, gentleman's gotta walk over. We need you to go to this side, sir. And if anyone else would like to comment on this, you might want to line up on that side.
Socially distanced, of course.
Yeah, obviously, keeping your distance.
Hello there. Hi, my name is Sai Udatta. I live in the same association that's adjacent to the newly proposed layout, which I bought the condo back, Vanities Apartments of Cambridge. So I do have a couple of questions. The first question is, what is the purpose of rezoning? Are we doing the same thing what we have done in the Apartments of Cambridge, or else what we currently call it as Traditions at Cambridge, or Glens at Cambridge? Or is it like a commercial place where you're building apartments for renters only? That's the first question.
Patrick, you might want to, just go over that. This is really not much more than what was originally planned for this area. You want to go into some details on that?
Yeah. The proposal, it's for a planned development district. Technically, it's for a planned development district zoning of the site, but we look at the underlying zoning district for both the use and the density. The current zoning of the site is R6, which is an attached single-family residential district that allows for this type of development. And what the purpose of the planned development is, is to allow for the use that's permitted in the district, at the density it's permitted in the district, to allow some flexibility in the design, to achieve some of the township objectives in the zoning ordinance, namely the preservation of open space, and the proposal of definite benefits for the site and the greater community. So, in this case, the project density that's allowed by the comprehensive plan, and allowed under the current R6 zoning district, is eight units per acre. The applicant proposes almost seven units per acre, so what's proposed by the applicant is actually less than what the zoning ordinance allows for. Also, the units that are proposed for the attached residential, that's a use that is allowed under the current R6 zoning district. So, they're not proposing a use that the R6 zoning wouldn't otherwise allow, or that a density that the R6 wouldn't otherwise allow. They're proposing some modifications in terms of unit spacing between the units to each other, a little bit on the height, and a little bit on some of the setbacks, and the internal road width. A lot of these modifications that they're proposing are consistent with the original PD in 1998, as well as some of the modifications that were granted to the other Cambridge developments to the east. So the purpose of the application is to try to fulfill what was proposed in 1998, albeit at a lower density and a different housing product. So if you have any follow-up questions on that, I'd be glad to answer those.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Actually, mine is a very straightforward question. Are those really condo units for owning purposes, or for renting purposes? Or, I mean, like an apartment complex?
Well, these are apartments, so they will be for rent. As opposed to, on the other side of the drive there, the other units are condominiums for ownership. But this project was really, this is a duplication of what was originally planned for this area back, I forget how long ago that was, and it was always designed for apartments to be in this area. Is your concern about the apartments, as opposed to condos?
Right.
Okay. So that would be?
So, I mean, my question is basically, because we also are sharing the clubhouse and amenities that are built, I mean, like, sharing with the condo co-owners versus, like, I don't know what's the contribution of those units to the association and all, so there is a lot more logistics to be played out there, if you are just simply renting it out for other people to just come in, right? So that's, our concern is towards how the common facilities that were built as part of the 1999 PDD is going to play in this, because now these are three different builders. I know we have, we're currently sharing between the Glens at Cambridge and the Glens at Traditions, right? So is it the third entity that will be sharing all the common facilities?
Patrick, what is going to be the arrangement? You know, obviously, we're gonna have a different living arrangement than with the condos, because condos have associations. The rental units will be managed differently, but they're all going to share that central clubhouse, correct?
I'll let the applicant speak on that, in terms of what the arrangement will be, but the clubhouse is on the Berkshire Apartments' property. So the clubhouse is part of, it's already there, but it is on the application, and part of the application. And before finishing, one of the items I also wanted to point out, I touched on it in the verbal report, is that although they're proposed to be apartments and rental units, consistent with the PD in 1998, they are designed to be consistent with the neighborhood to the east, in terms of the condominiums there. So, up on the board here, there's the architectural renderings that were submitted by the applicant to give them the look and the feel of an attached residential unit, so the garages are attached, and although there are two-story units, the architecture and the roof pitches are done such that it kind of softens the appearance of the density.
Okay. Yes, sir. Could you address some of those issues?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have entered into a shared maintenance agreement with the two condominium associations, the one for Traditions and the one for the Glens. So that Berkshire, who also owns the community facilities, will share in the cost equally in proportion to the other units. So, from a fractional standpoint, we'll be paid, we will, the apartments will contribute their equal share, just as the condominium does for those facilities. We broadened that agreement also, not only for the clubhouse, but for other shared facilities within the development, namely, the road coming into the community, the frontage, certain landscaping elements, certain stormwater elements, and so forth, because it's only equitable that the, each of the three elements share in proportion to the number of units within each element. And that agreement has been in place about a year and a half now, I believe, and Planning Service has been furnished a copy of that agreement.
Okay, thank you for that. Does that help?
Yep, that at least answers my question, so I'm coming with a group of people anyway, so some of these questions are also from the group, so it helps to understand what they're planning to do anyway, so it helps. I do have a couple of more questions with respect to that traffic. So when I bought the condo back in 2005, obviously, as, I'm sorry, I forgot the name, but as you mentioned, there is not much traffic, so it's easy to get on, get off the Canton Center Road. I don't know if, I mean, we already, even though there is no left-only, right-only lane, we currently use it as two lanes, as, to go onto the Canton Center Road, and as you know, the Canton Center Road, we cannot really stay on the center lane to actually merge onto the right, so you have to find a spot, like, where you have traffic that's not blocking you on both sides, it's clear, before you get onto the road. We have seen a lot of accidents on that area, so there is no traffic signal that's entering into the association that now covers 500 units, not just 270 or whatever units that we currently have, even though there are four entrances, though, two entrances that into that association are, one is on the Waterside Road, and one is on the Canton Center Road. So both of them doesn't have a traffic light. So, is there a proposal, or how do you help us alleviate the traffic problem where we can join, merge easily, without thinking too much, at least?
Patrick, do you want to address that?
Yes. The traffic impact assessment was prepared by the applicant's traffic engineer, and it's also included in the online packet, so if anyone wants to read the traffic impact report, it is there online. And the summary was that at Stonewood Road, where it intersects with Canton Center Road, it is busy there, it's very difficult to make especially a left-hand turn during the AM peak hour. That was the main concern of the traffic impact assessment. And the impact assessment is based on how it is designed, versus how it sometimes ideally functions. So for example, the impact assessment states that coming out of the development, Stonewood Road is one lane, but it's 20 feet wide, so naturally, if people are going right and left, they're gonna make their own right and left turn lane to get out of Stonewood. So, the impact analysis can't, when it looked at the traffic at Stonewood Road, the remedy for the delays it recommended was to add two to four feet widen Stonewood, so that there could be a dedicated right and turn, where they could paint a line there and actually use those, without having to self-regulate that. But the traffic impact assessment did not find a warrant for a signal there at the intersection. And part of the reason is that it doesn't quite line up to the intersection across Canton Center Road on the east. So because there's not that clean connection between those intersections, it's really hard to design a signal for that intersection.
Okay. Sir, anything else?
No, those are my main questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And did we have another gentleman that was ready to come on? No? No more participation? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
All right, have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor, and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna start at this end. Commissioner Okon, any?
No, no comments. I'm glad, it's a little bit lighter than what was proposed in 98, so to me, I have no problem with it at all. Thank you.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yeah, no problem at all.
Commissioner Perkins?
I'm good, thank you.
I also am okay. I have one question about, I believe I saw somewhere on here that sidewalks were going to be four feet width. Isn't standard five feet?
Yeah, and in reviewing the site plan, we found the same item, and there's a detail there that shows a four-foot wide sidewalk, but I think that's an oversight. I think they, I think the applicant's aware they have to be five feet, and when it comes time to redesign the sidewalk system, because we did have some comments about the locations of sidewalks, we'll make sure those are five feet.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, I think it's a good project. Commissioner Engel.
I'm all set.
I'm all set, but you had these...
I'm sorry.
Can I read those two letters into the record?
Okay. Yeah. We have correspondence concerning this project. I'd like to include that in the record from Frederick Farnell and also from Sharon Holcomb. There are two letters that were included with our information. Commissioner Zuber?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes, thank you. And in speaking of these letters, you're correct. There's a... In terms of even what we heard with the questions, I know people think that a PDD is rezoning, and that's hard. You know, it's hard for some people to understand, and you did explain a lot of it. But the zoning stays the same. The underlying zoning stays the same. So, the PDD basically gives you some leeway in terms of reconfiguring building and doing some modifications and spacing. So, the zoning has not changed. But some of the letters that we're seeing, it seems that some of the people were basically stating that they were concerned that they were in condos and now apartments are being brought in. Well, I'm assuming that that's all part of the underlying condominium, you know, agreement, basically, right, Jeff? I mean, the original from 1998, Tim, right? Correct? So, even though they might not have known that. Now, also, I mean, it is good, you know, practice as we do tell developers to speak with the residents. And it seems like from these letters, that wasn't done either. It seems like owners weren't informed. So, we really encourage the developer to work with the owners and inform all the owners and keep everybody informed of what's going on. Because when you don't know what's going on, that's when we start getting letters where people don't understand what's happening. And if you have everybody's input and you have everybody hearing what you're saying, it helps to make the process more smoothly. So, have you done that? Have you been working with the current owners and residents?
We had a Zoom conference with the Board of the Cobblestone Association. We couldn't attend their HOA meeting. I believe it was in April in person. They were holding Zoom meetings. We did participate in that. We have been in communication with the condominium through newsletters, but not in person. And your point is well-taken. Perhaps a little more in-person communication with the Board of the condominiums, both Traditions and Glens, is appropriate as we move forward and through, assuming that you vote to move this on to the next stage. There'll be a final PD, there'll be a site plan. This is just the first of, I believe... Patrick will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's really three steps involved: this, the final PD, and the site plan. Although the final PD and the site plan perhaps would go simultaneously. But we will make a point of reaching out and keeping these folks informed and seeking out their feelings. You know, we have communicated in the past when we entered into the shared maintenance agreement and the shared operation of the rather vast community facility that's at the project. But I thank you for your comments.
Okay. Yes, it's really important. A lot of people are confused from what we heard from the audience, what I'm reading. That would be the best thing to do. And the owners really should go to their homeowners' associations, too, and the management company. And you push for that communication also. That's important. I mean, I used to live in a condo in Canton also, and I know how it's important it is to go to your homeowners' association, because sometimes things don't get past the board. And see, like, if you said you had a Zoom meeting, encourage everybody to come.
We had... Yeah. We had a Zoom meeting only with the Board of the HOA of Cobblestone, which is a subdivision immediately to the west, that one of the gentlemen spoke tonight about his lot backing up to the Berkshire property. And we're very sensitive to that boundary in terms of the final landscaping, preservation of the natural vegetation and the transition. Even though they're both residential uses, there needs to be a landscape buffer between them. And if anybody would be curious to go and look at some of our product, I would invite you to go to HuntleyManor.com. It's a community we're just finishing in Novi and another one called Shearwater in Commerce, which we completed a year ago. We take great pride in our rental communities and the type of landscaping and the community facilities we bring to them.
Okay. Do you have any other in Canton that the residents could look at?
Not in Canton. This is our first rental or apartment home community in Canton.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that some of the questions here, people were asking about shared pools and that. Well, when you do have... When you do live in a condo, in my experience in Canton, you basically rent from the owner and the owner pays the fees, so they would be sharing the spaces also. That's correct. You won't be able to say, you know, renters can't. You can't do that. Another question I have is, so some of these modifications, have our fire department looked at it all? I mean, were they looking at some building height issues and...
That's correct. The fire department has reviewed them. The fire marshal has reviewed the plans and has recommended approval. As it goes with plan developments, many times, we'll have a recommendation of approval. And then farther down the road, when we have more engineered plans, the comments get much more specific. But for the dimensional layouts, they've recommended approval.
What do you think about some of the modifications that they're asking for?
I think the modifications are generally consistent with the Cambridge developments to the east. So, in terms of the modifications and the layouts, it'll be consistent. I think a lot of the architecture will be consistent as well, too. We've been meeting with the applicant for several months, obviously with the quarantine that's delayed the project review. But we started meeting with the applicant last fall and discussing the proposed plan and the development. And during the course of working with the applicant, many times, there are things that are modified to make it more conforming. So, the modifications that are requested are fairly in line with what's to the east and generally consistent with what the layout plan was in 1998.
Okay. Yeah, I do see that we have less housing there. But also, in terms of also the traffic, I know we talked about that, and, you know, that's a hard pill to swallow, because, you know, as a township, basically, we have to... We do the development, we ask the county to look at it and make some changes later. And in Canton, we have a lot of unusual intersections. The one you talked about here is going to be one of them. And I know that they're saying no light can be recommended because it's a difficult intersection, but I still think we can do that. I mean, it's not impossible to do. There are communities that have light situations like this. So, even though you don't have a road directly across, you can still do a three-way. So, I really still strongly think that we should look at creating some kind of a light there. And, you know, and when it comes down to it, really is up to the supervisor and the planning, you know, group to really work with Wayne County and push that. I know it's hard right now, but that's really important. So, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yeah. So, two questions for Pat. Pat, when we talk of the traffic deficiencies, I see that there are two deficiencies. Number one is on the Cannon Center Road and Ford Road, and there's a recommendation of a light, optimization of signal. Is that taken care of? Is that deficiency going to be overcome by the developer, or, you know, what's happening to that one? And the second one of the widening of the Stonewood Road, how's that going to be handled? So, is the traffic impact okay according to you?
In the traffic impact assessment, on the first question about Ford Road and Canton Center Road intersection, the traffic impact assessment notes that it recommends that there be signal optimization, which means that MDOT will have to get involved and make a determination in terms of the best way to optimize that signal for traffic flow. And the traffic impact assessment also notes that the future planned reconstruction of Ford Road, that this intersection be part of that project in terms of timing it with everything else that will be done along Ford Road. So, we can make a request that MDOT do that if they haven't done that already. My guess is they probably will in terms of planning the whole corridor when they redo Ford Road. So, that will be part of that project. I'm not sure if they'll do any signal optimization before then.
But you have confidence that, you know, that that will go through if this proposal is incorporated? You think that MDOT will optimize the signal? That should not be a concern, because my concern is that, you know, the deficiencies exist, and now with 500 homes coming in, it's going to be even worse. So, you know, we are hoping that MDOT is going to do that, but what if they don't?
Well, the traffic impact assessment states that the impact of this development on the Ford-Canton Center intersection will be minimal. And there's no way of knowing for sure what MDOT will do with that intersection, because if they give more green time to one area to alleviate a concern, that means less green time for somebody else. So, their engineers will have to look at that and find out the best way to optimize all four corners of the intersection during that AMP hour.
Thank you. Thanks. That's all for me.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
So, are we looking at the model motion then, still, then, basically? We had a model motion that our planners put together.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend preliminary approval of the Berkshire Apartments' planned development district on tax parcel number 061-99-0006-707, as provided in the planning development agreement... I'm sorry, the planned development agreement and plan documents, subject to widening the eastbound Boulevard Lane of Stonewood Road by two to four feet to allow for dedicated right and left turn lanes at Canton Center Road in accordance with the recommendation of the traffic impact assessment.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Oken?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
And Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay. So, the motion carries. What's next on this project, Jeff? Or Patrick?
The next step will be for the recommendation to go to the Township Board of Trustees for consideration for the preliminary plan development. If it is approved by the Township Board, then the next step will be for the applicant to make an application for final plan development, at which time they have to finalize their plan development agreement, if there's anything left to iron out, and finalize the plans. We have some items that we mentioned before with the sidewalk network that we'll talk to the applicant about to fine-tune that a little bit. So, it'll be a little bit more of a sharper plan and a closer plan to what we would see at a site plan during final plan review.
Okey-dokey. All right. Our third agenda item of the evening is the Canton Marketplace and Redwood at Marketplace preliminary PDD. This consideration is for this property, which is located north of Michigan Avenue between Lily... Sheldon and Lily Roads. You might also notice, this is bordering the entrance to the trail going up Morton-Taylor. Jeff, could you give us more detail?
Yes. About a year ago, back in August of 2019, the Planning Commission Board reviewed and approved a conditional rezoning on this property for Redwood and Marketplace. They kind of did a general layout and kind of mixed-use plan, if you recall, for the overall site, both to the east and west side of Morton-Taylor Road, north of Michigan Avenue. So, part of that conditional rezoning called for them to come back and do a plan development, you know, for all of the details relative to the specific proposal. So, the north portion of the site was conditionally rezoned to R6. The south portion of the site along Michigan Avenue retained its C3 zoning under the conditional rezoning agreement, so that we could integrate the two projects together. As you can see, the current proposal has two phases of residential, one to the west and one to the east of Morton-Taylor Road. That includes the Redwood Apartments. Different various types of elevations and floor plans are all in your packet as part of the preliminary conceptual plan. The phases along Michigan Avenue, the commercial phases, are basically phases three through seven. They don't know exactly until they market it and sell these pieces how that will lay out, but it basically is approximately 77,900 square feet of commercial if it's all developed, you know, as it's shown on the plan. So, that would be the maximum allowed under the PDD agreement would be that amount of square footage. The traffic study recommends typical right-turn tapers along Michigan Avenue and a future Michigan U-turn west of Morton-Taylor Road when the commercial phases are constructed. The Township's traffic consultant just completed the review. His letter is in your packet. They're showing an awful lot of... One of the recommendations they made was for a right-turn lane onto Morton-Taylor Road and elimination of some of the curb cuts onto Michigan Avenue. On the east side of Morton-Taylor on Michigan Avenue, it'd be a reduction of one curb cut. And on the west side of Morton-Taylor Road, I think it looks like an elimination of two curb cuts, just using the furthest east and furthest west curb cuts in order to help with access management. All of the sites internally would be interconnected. Those east and west curb cuts actually serve the residential portions also. As you can see, there are sidewalk systems throughout the entire project, which integrate the residential areas and provide connections up to the trailhead, and they also provide connections down to the commercial areas. So, the project sponsors here tonight to basically explain their proposal and to address the traffic issues that were brought up by our traffic consultant and answer any questions you may have on the preliminary PDD.
Thank you, Jeff. Project sponsors here, you said?
Is this a public hearing?
We need you to go on this side, please. And while they're going over there, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you to Jeff and Patrick. They've spent a lot of time with us over the last year putting together this PDD application. You'll notice that there's a lot more detail than you might usually see at this stage of the process, and Jeff and Patrick were instrumental in pushing us to provide that level of detail, given how complex this project is. So, I'm Kelly McIver. I'm from Redwood. And Don Gaber is here. He is the attorney for Marketplace, so hopefully between the two of us, we can answer your questions. Jeff explained our project a bit to you. I am with Redwood. We build one thing only. It's the product that you see on over on Ford Hagerty Road. It's two-bedroom, two-bath apartments, two-car attached garage, patio in the back, two-car driveway in front. We are emptiness targeted, and that allows us to provide... Single-story family living only. It allows us to provide a unique product to the township to help provide an age and place solution for people who are maybe looking to downsize from single-family but are not quite ready for more advanced senior living or more advanced care. It's all independent but very high-service apartments. One of the nice things we're able to do here is introduce new floor plans into the neighborhood to increase the diversity of the portfolio that we're able to offer in Canton. The phasing of the construction, Redwood on the west side will go in first, followed by Redwood on the east side, and then as the commercial development up front finds users, they will fill in in the front commercial. Marketplace has been looking very aggressively for those users, but COVID has changed all of our lives and maybe changed our processes a bit, so those things will be following at a later date. We're happy to talk about traffic. I would say I think that Wade Trum maybe misunderstood the schedule when the improvements would go in. Redwood did not have an intention of putting in the curb cuts off Michigan 12 up front. We were just going to build down Canton or down Morton-Taylor, improve that road up through the boundary of the west side with phase-one construction, and then up past the trailhead on the east side. That gives us two points of access, and the fire department was okay with that. And then the commercial... Don can speak to the commercial developers, the commercial portion, and how that, those driveways would work over there. The nice thing about this is the whole parcel used to be zoned commercial, and with putting Redwood in there, that has decreased the potential traffic impacts here. The traffic study did find that we were not contributing to any decrease in the service levels on Michigan 12, which we actually expected. We're very low traffic impact. which we actually expected. We're very low traffic impact. We have 1.65 people per unit and one and a half cars per unit. So we expected that. It's certainly lower than it was originally zoned for. And because we have empty nesters with different travel patterns, maybe not at the high service hours and the lower number of cars per apartment home, we're able to provide even less traffic than you would see with a single-family or traditional apartment. So that's always a great part for us. The other thing we really focused on that you can see here is when we met with Planning Commission last time, there was a lot of question about how the two parts of the neighborhood, as a mixed-use neighborhood, would work together. So the Storm Pond on the west side actually services both neighborhoods. And as you can see, it crosses the boundary. Redwood will be building that in phase one. There are pedestrian connections that go through both the commercial and up through the residential. We will have similar landscaping, as you can see in our landscaping plans, that along Morton Taylor. And even within the neighborhood themselves, there is a similarity, a sense of place and a sense of uniformity. So we're really excited and happy to answer any questions you have. And if you want to speak or you want to leave some questions? Okay, and then John will speak on the behalf of the commercial developers.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir? Does he have that?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments, please. John Gaber, 380 North Hall Woodward, Birmingham. I just want to say that, as you might remember, my clients have owned this property since about 2006 and have been working diligently to try to develop it, both on a commercial basis exclusively up front. And a lot of deals have fallen through. And essentially in 2014, when essentially this was converted to a potential mixed-use type of development, we engaged with Redwood and decided to do a mixed-use type of development. And that's what you see the culmination of in front of you. With respect to the commercial sites in front in particular, we've limited the potential uses from what the zoning ordinance would allow under the C3 zoning classification, both in the conditional rezoning agreement. And then we've limited the uses to the permitted uses that are in Exhibit F of the PD agreement that you have in your packet. And basically what we're talking, what we're looking for is retail sales, retail service, restaurants, office. It would be consistent and fit in that type of zone, in this type of context. And those are really the users that we're looking for to go after, to both facilitate traffic up and down, people that go up and down Michigan Avenue, as well as, you know, our built-in base with the Redwood residential users and occupants behind us. So we've, you know, COVID-19 has taken a toll. We've been looking. Once we get preliminary approval on the plans and essentially we know that Redwood is going to close on the deal, we'll be able to move forward in earnest to market this as soon as possible. Because as we all know, there are time constraints that are in the PD agreement that we have to abide by. So it's in our best interest to move quickly. So we want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. And one final comment, as you've seen, with regard to our plan, it's changed a little bit since the concept plan and the conditional rezoning agreement. And I think, as Kelly mentioned, that's because we've had the opportunity to further develop the potential layout and the potential uses of the site. We do have engineers involved from both sides. So we've looked at stormwater and some other utility components as well. And that's allowed us to further refine the plan that you see in front of you from what we had originally. And obviously, we'll continue to do that to the next stage if we obtain approval to move forward. So thank you, and we'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I only have one thing to say to your hunt for commercial. Think seafood. Seafood, repeat after me, seafood.
Thank you. We've been engaging with the restaurateurs, so we're, your point is well taken. Thank you.
You mean like Long John Silver's?
What's that?
Long John Silver's?
Anything. We're going to do something a little differently. We're going to go to the audience, but let's go to the commission first. Commissioner Acharya?
Yes. I have a question. Again, this is about the traffic. If you look at the Morton Taylor Road and goes south towards Palmer, there's always, there's a four-way stop over there and it kind of chokes up in the evening. So do you think that this is going to be impacted significantly?
Well, we've, you know, that was brought up in the traffic study, the whole kind of off-ramp from Michigan Avenue to Sheldon and the crossover there. That's an existing deficiency. We've been talking to MDOT for years about how to potentially fix that. It's already an existing deficiency. We're not, we don't think this development will dramatically impact that at all. It may take actually some traffic off of there if people are going home to these apartments instead of on down the street. You know, MDOT's going to have to come up with a resolution with Wayne County because of the funky geometrics of that corner. And we've done study after study after study in terms of how to fix that and what it's going to take is, we're going to, somebody's going to have to buy some property and probably tear down a building at some point in time in the future to fix that. And right now, that's probably not reality. You know, MDOT, you know, in regional transportation studies and even recently when we've looked at, I think we even talked with the private school that's taking over the old Agape Academy. I think they even talked to MDOT and Wayne County about that. They're doing some improvements on Getty's Road in front of their property pursuant to the Wayne County driveways, but I don't think anything's happening at that intersection, unfortunately.
Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Thanks. Yeah, in terms of that intersection you were speaking of, yeah, we have to get creative there. That's one of those intersections that's been around since horse-drawn carriages in Canton. So we do have to, I think that there's, with some fancy creative lighting, we can do it. Jeff, I'm sorry, Greg, I just asked that, since we've switched the process, even if we go out to residents, can we come back for more questions here if we have any? Because we're having us ask first.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not understanding you.
So you're going to have residents speak after us, correct? You said you were going to switch this up? I'm sorry, I must.
I apologize. I'm having a lot of difficulty getting details.
She wants to know if she can ask questions after the public.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because we switched things up today. I'm sorry. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay. Good, I know it's hard in these masks. No, so this is really good. I actually take the trails a lot. I ride over to, I love, we went to the Coney Island the other day, my daughter and I, off the trail. So when you're on these trails, to get to the commercial site, you'd still have to go down Morton Taylor. Is that correct? Or are we seeing, I don't see any access to the, if you have any restaurants closer?
No, you would have to go up the pedestrian system along Morton Taylor that they put in along the west side because they don't own the property directly north of their site on the west side. So you'd have to go cross over to the east side up and then cross back over. So they don't control all of the property along the west side of Morton Taylor.
Okay, I would just encourage also that we, one thing that disappointed me was eating at the restaurant off the trail the other day is there are no place to sit. I know when they had been, they had brought that before us before. We had talked about putting picnic areas because we had to sit in the parking lot and eat. And so if we're going to be near a trail, I really encourage that we have, you know, picnic tables behind some of these restaurant areas to sit down and eat or some places to eat rather than just all parking. So I think we really need to encourage.
I think when we look at the site plans, we can look at exterior eating areas and how that integrates even with the neighborhood for people to walk to the restaurants and be able to sit and eat.
Right, right, yeah, rather than just all black tubs because we had to sit in the parking lot yesterday and eat.
There's a nice pond area that they could sit along, you know, on the other side of the parking lot, too. They could use the pond area and create that as an amenity for outdoor seating also.
Okay, good, yeah, because on these drawings, they just see all parking lot. So if we could change some of that to outdoor seating, that would be great. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Zuber?
Yeah, I have a question about the plans. I'm looking at the building plans and elevations and specifically, just if you could just leave it there, Patrick, because what I'm trying to figure out is which plans have the front garages, which buildings on this plan have front-entry garages and which ones have the rear-entry garages, like as shown on Sheet A 4.4 and some other sheets in here. It's confusing because it looks like, on the site plan, it looks like all of them would have front-entry garages. But there are floor plans that show front porches and then rear-entry garages.
I think, Kelly, what you've done on some of those units, you've created actually secondary fronts, even though they have all front-entry garages. Some of those rear elevations, I think, are like fronts and have alternate porches on the backside. It kind of sort of looks like fronts. Kelly, is that true?
Yes, on the site plan, it's sort of the mustard yellow. If you look on the east side, it's the apartment homes on Morton Taylor. So that'll have the front porch facing that berm in Morton Taylor. And then on the east side, if you went over, I'm sorry, on the west side, right where the detention pond is there, those mustard-orange ones again will have that. It's a front porch, but it's a, it all, it's a front porch area that's all looking out onto the detention pond there.
So basically what you did is you enhanced the back porch to make it more of a covered porch on those sides near the pond and backing up to Morton Taylor.
Yes, yes.
So if I have company coming over, they have to walk around the back of the building to come to the front porch?
Yes, in a sense, but there is an entry to the home by the garage. So there's a way, like you could, you could park your car in the, you know, there's a two-car driveway. So you could park, they could park their car in their driveway and then meet you out there. You can walk them through your home.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my question has to do with my distaste for these, you know, just a whole bunch of garages facing the street. But I don't know how you design a building that does what these do without having just a line of garages facing the street.
So one other apartment home here that we don't have on Hagerty Road, it's the bright pink ones. Those are called Willowood. Oh, no, I'm sorry, the red ones. Those are called Willowoods. Those still have a front-facing garage, but the front of the garage protrudes less than five feet from the front elevation of the home. So from an architectural perspective, it's still a front-facing garage, but it's considered non-prominent. So that will reduce some of that. That'll soften that look as you drive down that streetscape where those red homes are.
Yeah. I wish more of them were like that. Just for the street character. So that's really all I have.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set, thanks.
As am I. Commissioner Perkins?
All set.
Commissioner Egenberger?
All set.
Commissioner O'Con?
Just, I know this is still in the preliminary stages, but kind of agreeing with Dawn on the elevations. I don't want to compare, it's bad comparing, but the applicant that was just in front of us before you had the same type of project apartments. And looking at their elevations compared to your elevations, I hope when you come back that you address your elevations a little bit. They're very plain. The roof is very linear, not broken up. Like Dawn said, it's just, you know, big garage doors here and there. So I would suggest looking at the previous application that was just in front of us, kind of as an example of the same type of building, but what they've done to their architecture because it's a big difference.
Do you want to see more detail, more pop?
Yeah, a little bit more character. That's all I got. Thank you.
Jeff, do we have the elevations to put up there?
Yeah, Patrick can bring those up.
They're on page 154. I mean, some of them are.
For some reason, mine are not coming in.
So, you know, some of these units are typical of what was built on Hagerty Road south of Palmer. That's the other Redwood community we have. This has a lot more variety than, that was about a hundred-unit project, I believe. Isn't that right, Kelly?
Yes, that's right.
So they've added a couple, you know, new floor plans, like the ones that were discussed earlier relative to where the units back up, where they've added the porches and the ones that have the porches facing the pond. And then the units which have kind of the push-in garages. But most of them will have, you know, the garages that protrude out the front, which makes it very garage-dominated. I think that's, part of that is a function of the type of, you know, of units they are because they're a two-bedroom, you know, two-garage apartment and you're putting those all adjacent to one another. I think they have limited the length of these buildings, so they're not asking for a modification to building length. So in some cases, you know, they've built these with 12 in a row. So we don't have that condition here. They've limited, I think the longest building, Kelly, is what?
Six, seven maybe? I think six.
Six or seven units. So they've tried to break up the buildings by not having these things that are so long so that you have some space in between them.
So another thing that we're limited by is the fact that we're a single-story. It's actually, when we do rent comps, we look, there's nobody else like us, so we have to figure out how to compare our rents with other people's. And one of the things that we charge a premium for in doing those comps is the single-story because that's valuable to people. It has a value to be able to come in from your garage with zero entry into your kitchen and to be able to get through your entire apartment, particularly when you're an empty nester. So it's one of our positives, but it's also one of our limitations. So what you see here is, one of the ways that we vary the roof is with the raised roof heel truss. It allows us to get an extra foot on there. One of the things I can do to vary the streetscape is I can put a dormer there instead. I can't do both because of the limitations of the architecture, but I can do either or. So what I might be able to do is do some with dormers and some with the raised roof truss, if that is a thing that you think would be attractive and help satisfy your concern about the streetscape with the roof line.
Where would you put the dormers and what would they, what kind of dormers would they be?
They're, they're like dormers? And they have like a shutter and a window and sometimes the shutter's open if the municipality wants it open and sometimes the shutter's shut if the municipality would prefer a more authentic shutter.
And where would?
And it goes in between the roof line.
So it would go kind of where the roof breaks there?
Yes, kind of where the roof break is, yeah.
Okay.
You mean facing?
Facing out.
Facing out, you know, on the top of the garage roof facing the other direction. So basically across gable?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that would help break up the roof line a little bit. And give you something different when you're driving down the road, when you're looking at the garages, you have something else to look at other than the garage door.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking at the first plans, the, in our packet, the, these are called Breeze Wood. And they're just, it's just garage, 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 garage. And that's not my favorite thing to see.
So the interesting thing about a Breeze Wood is it's almost the same as a Forest Wood, which is sort of our bread and butter. That's the unit that you see the most of. But it's got a covered porch on the back, so it's nice to have that to back up to a pond. But you're right, you don't see that from the front. You're only, that's only an amenity you can enjoy from the back. So we'll present some things with the dormers. I really want to again highlight the percentage of the units that are not garage-prominent, like the Haydens and the Willowoods. It's certainly going to be much less prominent than the Hagerty Road neighborhood. And then we'll play with the streetscape with the dormers and the roof trusses and see if there are some other things we can do to satisfy that concern.
Commissioner Zuber, in addition to potential dormers, what about the window treatments? Can you see some, either, you know, shutters or something that gives that a little bit more pop?
You mean a between? I'm not sure which window, which windows.
Well, I mean, if you look at, look at the rear elevations, the standard side elevation, you see, there are some places where there are, like on the side elevation, it looks like they did add the shutter look there, but you don't see that anywhere else. And it's just, you know, it becomes pretty monotonous as Commissioner O'Con, who is alluding to. And, I don't know, it just needs, it needs more. You know, I think that's what we're getting at. You know, we don't want to design it for you, but it just, it needs to be more, a little bit more special.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm not sure what sheet, because my, there we go, A 4.1. It's funny because the standard side elevation has the shutters and the high-profile side elevation does not have any shutters. I think that might just be mislabeled, but.
It might be mislabeled, but I'll be honest, we were actually moving away from shutters and into trim boards. There's a feeling that that might be, in some regions, you know, we're in a couple of different states. In some regions, we've been asked to go towards, to the trim boards because they're more modern-looking. But if what I'm hearing from you is you want shutters because that's more fitting with a more classical aesthetic that you're looking for here, we can certainly look for some opportunities to put some more shutters in.
I don't know that we necessarily, I mean, I'm not sure. I don't know that we necessarily, I mean, I'm not sure that shutters are the answer. I think we'd like to see, you know, I mean, it, I'm just kind of confused, like I said, because the, the standard side elevation has shutters and the high-profile side doesn't. And I can't figure out what's special about the high-profile side then. Because it, I don't see anything other than, I guess siding versus brick, which I'm not sure. I mean, I'd like to see what that looks like, the, the wider profile trim.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, whatever, what, I'm not sure what we can do to make this look better, but.
Is there also a possibility of different garage door styles? That you can vary the look so that if you're going to go garage door, garage door, garage door, garage door, that there could be a little variety around the garage doors? Or the variety of the style of garage door?
I can take a look at that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, some with windows, some without windows. Some with arched windows. Yeah.
Any other comments from the commission? Because we're going to go to the audience now.
Can I have one more, Greg? Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, I guess one other thing is, we're by the trails and we have to think about the feel of where we are here. By the trails, and we had talked about a connected, you know, connected community, people walking to the trails, people walking to the stores. But I walk in a lot of these neighborhoods, and one thing that drives me crazy about this one is there's these kind of neighborhoods, there's, you can only walk in the street. So you either drive somewhere or you walk in the street. And even out the other side, there's no connection to a trail or anything. So while the people might have the trail down the street, they'd either have to drive to the trailhead or walk in the street. Is there any way we can look at changing that?
Well, there's, there's, there's internal sidewalks adjacent to the street on one side of all of the streets, you know, throughout there. So we don't have sidewalks in here on both sides of the streets. And then there's internal sidewalk pass through the project to get you over to Morton Taylor, to get you up to the trail. So I'm not, so I'm not sure, what exactly are you asking, Anne Marie?
Because when I, when you're walking, so you're saying if you walk out your back door on some of these, you'll have a sidewalk that will take you, you, you won't have to walk in the street to get to the trails? That's my question.
Well, okay, for example, on the west side, where you see the blue and green units on the, on the north side there, that, the red marks that Patrick just brought up, those are all, that's the sidewalk circulation system. So those are all the sidewalks that are adjacent to the street.
Okay, so those are all behind? Let me see.
Well, they're all adjacent in front of the garages.
In front of the garage, yeah, so you'll be in the street, basically.
Right.
That's where the cars drive. You'll be sharing that with the cars.
Well, no, there's a separate sidewalk. The red is a separate sidewalk, separate from the street.
Okay, because I didn't see that in the picture.
Yeah, so the red is actually a sidewalk. It's integral, it's, there's no separation between the street and the sidewalk, but it's a separate five-foot wide sidewalk. It's not in the street.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a separate sidewalk.
Is there a curb?
It's probably a manable curb and then a sidewalk.
Okay.
Now, we have that in a lot of condo complexes where we have the sidewalks fairly close because of the setbacks, and we need to get the cars in. The driveways are all deep enough to accommodate cars that aren't going to be rolling over the sidewalk. So on those sides of the street where we've got a sidewalk, you've got five feet plus a 20-foot, 22-foot drive. On the, on the side that, without the sidewalk, is just a 22-foot drive. So there's plenty of room to park in the driveway without obstructing the sidewalk, you know, where the sidewalk exists. So the issue here we have is since they don't control all of the property along Morton Taylor, they have all of the property on the east side of Morton Taylor, so they can get a, a common, you know, standard, you know, township sidewalk. When they put the Morton Taylor Road in, they can build the sidewalk all the way up. So if you're on the west side, you're going to have to cross over to the east side, go up, or to the east side, and then cross back over to the trail. But that, but the trail's at the very end of the road, so, you know, it's just one of those things, because they don't control the entire west side of the street.
Okay, so for the elevation we were looking at, though, it looked like it just, it was just grass and then street. So we did, we didn't see the sidewalk in that elevation we were looking at?
Yeah, so the, the red marks are all where all the sidewalks are, either adjacent to the road or in, you know, a typical, you know, sidewalk likely would have along Canton Road, along Morton Taylor Road. They, you know, they have, there's the two out parcels there that they don't control, so they can't connect the sidewalks there until those two pieces come in.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the, the yellow areas are the crosswalk areas to get from one side of the street to the other.
Okay.
So, and, you know, as part of their community benefit, you know, they are paving in two phases, Morton Taylor Road all the way to their north property line. So that'll probably provide better and more convenient access to the trail for people who don't live there that are driving to the trail. They will have to drive along a dirt road.
Okay.
So you can kind of see where the cross is to the trailhead there, so they've got a crosswalk back over to the trailhead driveway. And then the township would have to pick that up and put some type of connecting point along the driveway, you know, to the trail system, if we want to enhance that driveway.
Okay, although, I mean, the dirt road's not bad there, so it kind of keeps traffic slower too, in my opinion.
Right.
When I go there. Thanks.
All set? Okay, let's go to the audience. Any comments, concerns, questions?
Did we open the?
On this project?
Oh, we did.
Yeah, we did.
I don't remember.
No?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Egenberger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's start here with Commissioner Oken. Other than the elevations and things like that, that, are you okay with this project?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Is this vote, is this the vote?
Pardon?
No.
No.
It was just, it's discussion.
We're discussing.
Yeah, I'm okay, thank you.
This is a re-discussion.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set, thank you.
Commissioner Zubor?
Other than what I've already said, I can't think of anything.
We're getting thrown off. No, everything's fine, thanks.
Commissioner Oken?
I'm good.
All right. So in terms of adding a little bit of pop, a little bit of detail, is this something that we can, you can work with staff?
Well, you would add it as a condition to your recommendation for preliminary PDD approval. And then they address that when they come back for final PDD approval. So I would include it in your motion. If you want them to, if, if you want to add what, you know, Mr. McIver suggested in terms of enhancing some of those elevations with additional cross dormer, you know, you know, cross, you know, dormers or cross gables or whatever, they need to do to help with the streetscape. And just to evaluate the elevations and add some additional detail where, you know, where it would make sense.
And additional seating areas if there's restaurants.
Right, so we can add that in to make sure that the seating areas take advantage of the pond and they have outside spaces for the commercial areas.
Can we include adding a seafood restaurant to this?
So most restaurants want outdoor patio these days for, for more than one reason.
Yeah.
Is somebody working on the verbiage?
I, I can take a stab at it.
Okay.
I move to recommend preliminary approval for the proposed Redwood Marketplace of Canton planned development on the tax parcels, as noted, I am not going to read all those digits. Subject to the conceptual development plan and draft planned development agreement, subject to final review of traffic study and recommendations from the township's traffic consultant, and also subject to some additional dormers and/or trim details and/or garage door variety to make the, the elevations more interesting and varied. And subject to including some seating on the, on the backside of the parking lots for the commercial area. Did I miss anything?
Anything else to add to that? Is that pretty good?
Okay. I was listening.
All right, do we have support for that?
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Oken?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Oken?
Yes.
And Chairman Green?
Yes. And next step for that one, Jeff?
The preliminary PDD would be presented to the township board at their next available meeting. And then, once the board approves that, then they would bring back the final PDD back to you. And probably first phase site plan.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Our fourth agenda item is the Innsbruck Apartments' site plan, where we're considering a site approval for a property which is located east of Lily Road and north of Warren Road. Jeff, could you give us more?
Yes, this is on a 4.7 acre, a piece of property located on the east side of Lily Road, just north of Warren Road, north of Coves of Canton condominiums. It's an interesting piece of property that's been sitting there for a while. We rezoned it to R6 quite a while ago. As you can see on the plan, the, the property is impacted by the Tonquish Creek and some floodplain, so there's a very small portion of it that's actually usable. So Danny Vary with Lake Anthony Homes has taken a stab at this. They're proposing two buildings, 12 units each building, townhouse-style development facing Lily Road. So these basically hug up to Lily Road as, as close as possible. They basically are, basically a two-story elevation in the front, a three-story elevation in the back. So they had to go to the zoning board of appeals for some variances to building height and stories and things based on the change in elevation of the property from front to back. This is the same product, or some more product than what Mr. Vary built up off of Plymouth Road across from the courthouse. So if you're familiar with those new townhouses, those are also Mr. Vary's. So the, the lower-level garages would be accessed via driveway behind the building. So the driveway will come in off of Lily Road just south of the Tonquish Creek and wrap around the backsides of the buildings and kind of end in a parking cul-de-sac. So you can see the elevation of the back is a three-story elevation, but in the front, it's a typical two-story elevation. The applicant, as I mentioned, received some variances from the ZBA in June. One minor variance at the front setback to allow the porches to encroach in the front setback, or the overhangs on the porches to encroach into the front setback a little bit. Because we needed to have them widen out the driveway in the back a little bit to get to a standard driveway width in the back. The, also got a, a variance to the number of stories, or an interpretation of the number of stories. It's sort of like two and a half stories, but we, we measured from final finish grade, so they had to get a variance from that requirement. And, and then where the driveway comes in from Lily Road, the corner of that driveway was close to the back corner. I think they've redesigned it so that variance is just from the driveway to the back corner of the building in terms of the distance between the curb and the back corner of the building. So for, for you tonight, the, you know, you, this is basically a site plan you'll only see at one time for a multiple family. These will be apartments, zoned, this is zoned R6. The applicant's requested a modification from the planning commission to allow more parking than required. Because of, basically, the parking, you've got a, a space in, and you've got a space in the driveway. A lot of times, the residents will park in the lot so they can get their cars in and out of the driveway. So they wanted a little bit more parking behind the building to accommodate what they know their tenants need in terms of maneuvering cars back and forth around, you know, in terms of blocking their partner's, you know, car in the garage or letting people in and out of the garage. So the modification allows them to move forward, so the, and they also need a modification for the landscaping. They felt that because the buildings are close to the road, they are basically doubling up on foundation landscaping and roadway landscaping in the front of the building. So they wanted to move 14 of the required 20 evergreens, as you can see on the plan, from the Lily Road front edge to the south property line where it abuts the coves, which will provide some buffering, you know, additional buffering from the coves there. So just south of the building is where those 14 evergreens are. And then they provided additional evergreens there along the, the parking edge and along the property line just to, to make sure that, you know, there's, you know, adequate buffering between the activity areas behind the building. And the coves are only one-story, one, one and a half story buildings. These are be, you know, substantially taller, so, so they're asking for that modification to move those evergreens. So based on the layout, staff doesn't have any problem with the, with the recommended modifications. More parking for apartments is always better, especially when you have just two buildings and limited areas to go. I think Mr. Vary is here tonight to answer any questions about the proposed plan. So I'll just turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jeff. Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Again?
Danny Vary, 4902 DeWitt in Canton. As always, Jeff covers everything that you need to know. So if there's any other questions that you have for me directly, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
All right, we're just going to open it up here. I'm not going to go in any particular order from the commission. Anybody have anything?
Yeah, this is nice. I, I like the idea of having the entrances face the street and having a single-car garage on the back. I think that that will be a really nice feature for Lily Road. And the front elevations on this, I, I love seeing that, that, that they look nice. And I didn't, I'll have to drive by, my, my office is right down the street from your buildings in Plymouth. And I, I'm usually trying not to have an accident at that intersection, so.
What do you think of the rear elevations?
They're, you know, they're, I think they're nice. I mean, you're not really going to see that from, because you're not going to be able to get very far away, so I don't think you'll, you'll perceive it the way that it's drawn. It looks massive on the drawing. I think that having the little balconies and the, the brick popping up like that is not bad. Yeah, the, I mean, the line of garage doors is not very exciting, but.
Jeff, could you pull up, oh, never mind, you got it right there. Okay, so that's, that's a rear elevation, and yet I see the three roof peaks, the extra roof peaks in the front.
Oh, yeah.
But on our drawings, we don't, we don't show that. Was there a reason for that design difference?
No, they should be on there. If they're not on, I just overlooked that. But we do have the gables on the rear. Yeah, they're supposed to be on there.
Okay.
So I'll have that changed and give it to Jeff.
Okay.
Those should have been on the back.
I appreciate that.
Another thing that's different from the elevations to the photo is that the brick, the brick goes all the way up to the roof line on the back elevation as well. I don't know if that's an oversight or it's flipped.
Originally, it was actually supposed to be like your drawing. And then when we were building it, we decided to add it all the way up. So I can go all the way up, it doesn't matter. That was just the original way that it was designed. Keep going, right there. And I don't, I don't know if it looks better or worse going all the way up or not. I, my personal opinion, I think it looks better like that, just because it's so linear, or I should say vertical, on the, on the existing or the ones that I already built, where that gives it a little bit more, I guess, not straight up and down lines.
Rhythm.
Well, Dawn, would it make sense if he's going to put gables on the back, maybe to align the gables, if the brick goes all the way to the eve line, just to extend that vertical up where the gables are? And so that you align, if, so if he's going to extend the brick up to the, the eve line in the back, would that, would it make sense to put the gables there?
Well, it's, on the photo, it's, it's kind of every other. There's one above the brick, and then there's, there's a wider gable above some siding. So I think we just have to take a look and see.
Whatever you guys want, because reality is, it doesn't really impact me a whole lot. I just, like, so you just tell me which way you want it, and I'll do it. I'll do it with the brick all the way up like that, or I'll do it like the drawing. I personally like the other way better, even though I already did it that way. I think the other way softens it, because it's just, if you look at it, it just looks, I don't know, I don't like it. I like the other way a little bit better, because it's, it looks like it's, it's sectioned, almost like it's sliced bread.
I, I kind of agree with that. I think we just have to think about where the.
The one, the one he, it's presented to us, or the?
This version.
Yeah.
But with gables.
Yeah, with the gables, for sure.
With the three sections there?
I'm thinking gables over the, like, a wider gable over the brick parts that come up, or, or vice versa.
Like over these, these three sections?
Yeah.
So you'd have three, so you'd have three gables?
That's what I would suggest, but.
I would agree with that, Dawn.
Okay. Yeah. It's, it's nice job, though.
Yeah, so, so what you're saying is keep, keep the drawing, but add the gables?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that doable?
Yeah, no problem. I thought it had it on there, I apologize. I didn't even, didn't even look at it. Just assumed that it was there.
Anyone else?
You gave us a photo instead of a rendering.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Thank you. One thing, there were several variances there, and one of them, variances always worry me because we have them there for a reason in terms of rules. But in the executive summary, you read that due to hardships posed by the drain buffers and floodplain, ZBA... you read that due to hardships posed by the drain buffers and floodplain, the ZBA granted several variances to accommodate the reasonable use of the property. Would that, what type of risk is there to the floodplain?
Well, he's already got his floodplain permit, so he knows what area he's going to be able to work in and what areas he has to stay out of. So there's a line on the site plan which shows, you know, where the future floodplain line is. He has to do a little bit of cutting and filling, but he's already got his state permit for the floodplain line for the Tonkwish. One discussion we had with the coves was because they have some blockages and they're getting erosion on the banks of their portion of the Tonkwish, you know, whether or not, you know, Danny's, when he's working in there, he's willing to go in and I think to remove some of the down trees and blockages in there, which will help free up the flow of the Tonkwish, because they do have a little bit of flooding in some of the backyards of Coves of Canton due to the erosion.
And so you're saying that by removing some of those trees, it will help stop some of that erosion?
Well, it helps restore the natural flow of the water, so the water doesn't come up so high and erode the top bank. What's happening is, when there's a blockage in any creek or drain, it slows down the movement of water, but it also requires, allows that water to go higher than what it would normally go, because it's backing it up. So if you get rid of some of those blockages, the water level's not going to get so high up on the banks, on the top, to the top of the bank of theirs. I think your banks are not as steep or high as the ones in coves, I don't think, are they, Danny?
I don't know, because I didn't walk down at the coves, but I will tell you that I already have the plans to take all the trees out that are down in the creek.
Yeah.
That was part of my contract with my tree guy, because it will impact them, as he said, but it'll also impact my property as well, so I plan on taking those out, so...
So then who would maintain that going forward? Because obviously, you know, after you build it, the tree roots will start to grow back.
Well, it's a county drain, but I'm doing it because I know they won't.
Yeah, the coves are going to have to restore their own banks, but at least we can take care of the rising water, so the water doesn't get up so high and continue to erode the top of the bank. Because the trees act like a dam, is what they do, so then the water just rises, so...
So we know, I mean, we know that the county doesn't exactly maintain things, so what happens then, after we build? We're just going to have to keep your management companies going to keep maintaining that part of it, then?
Well, if I have a tree fall in it and I own it, I'm going to get it out of there, you know, just because I don't want it to impact my piece, along with the people down the, down the way. I mean, that's why that thing is a mess.
Yeah.
It is a mess. If you look back there, there's trees, you know, this big around that have fallen over, and not just one, there's three or four of them in there.
And a lot of those are old ash trees that died and fell in, so, from when the ash tree, ash bore, you know...
So that's been there, what, 17 years?
I think so, by that one.
Oh, yes, it's ash trees. Okay, so would that, and how would that alleviate that area? I mean, just even outside, so if he removes a lot of those trees just behind where he's building, how many more trees need to be removed in that drain, Jeff, do you know?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Anne Marie, I've not been back in there.
Okay, all right, well, at least it will help start to alleviate some of the problem we have there. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion, unless somebody has a comment.
Go ahead. Julia's in a hurry here, so...
What?
Julia's in a hurry, so go ahead.
Oh, oh, okay. I move to recommend...
I think they're gone.
...approval of the request for site plan approval on parcel number 008-99-0001-707 for Innsbruck Apartments, including the parking and landscape modifications as shown on the plans.
And adding the dormers back onto the backside.
Oh, and adding dormers to the rear elevations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
And Chairman Green?
Yes.
And their next step, Jeff?
We get, going to the township board for site plan approval as soon as he makes the revisions to the rear elevations.
Okay, very good.
Excellent.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, so our fifth and last item of the evening is Culver's Restaurant Site Plan.
They have fish sandwiches.
Where we're considering site plan approval, at least most of us are, which, for property
located south of Ford Road between Canton Center and Sheldon Roads, otherwise known as the Meyer Parking Lot. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, you saw this back in January for special land use approval for an outlot in Meyer's Parking Lot. So basically, the site as shown on the plans is the area right behind the bank and behind Spoon's there in that corner where TNT Fireworks had taken up residence over the past few years. The site actually incorporates the driveway that goes through the Meyer site behind Spoon's Restaurant, which will actually serve in some capacity as the major driveway in and out of the site. So this is about a 1.8, about a 1.8 acre parcel, just located south of the gas station entrance. So as part of what they did is, when you approve the site, or the special land use, you also approve the modifications to the Meyer Parking Lot and the modifications for the width of the private road easement when we did the site plan approval. So I've kind of reincorporated the private road approval back into this site plan approval, even though you approved some of that before they did the final site plan. So the proposed building is primarily brick and stone, and the drive-through and order waiting spaces are more than adequate to serve the needs. So they basically have a typical drive-through, but they also have a waiting area that people can pull out up front to help expedite, you know, orders, since, you know, sometimes it's ice cream, sometimes it's things that people have to wait for their orders, since they're not a typical fast food restaurant. The Culver's entrance will be located along the north-south drive, as I mentioned, it intersects with the two primary east-west drives through the Meyer site. So the site plan meets all access requirements internally and externally of the proposed site, and the plan shows that there's not a turning conflict with the Chase Bank Drive on the north side. I think we had a planning commission member concerned with the bank driveway and how it interacts with the north-south driveway through the Culver's site. And they can address that in more detail if there's any additional questions. So they did a traffic control plan that really cleans up some of the confusion coming in and out of the Meyer site at the gas station driveway with the kind of T-intersection there. They provided some traffic control in and out of their site with stops, you know, stop controls at the end of the Meyer driveway. Right now, there's just kind of a free-for-all with kind of temporary signage put up there, so there's some permanent signage that'll be placed within the landscape buffers and help, kind of navigate that a little bit better. One of the concerns that staff had was, at the south end of the Spoon's site, right at their driveway, there's some grading and landscape issues that really help, that block your vision, looking west, so you can't see eastbound traffic coming in from Canton Center. So they'll work with the property owner and clean up the grade and the landscaping on that, on that, you know, south, southwest corner of the site there, where their driveway intersects with the main Meyer driveway. I go through there all the time and I can't see oncoming traffic from Canton Center when people are coming eastbound along that entrance drive before you get to the Garden Center. The, there's just two minor corrections that need to be made to the plan. The first is a correction to the foundation landscaping, there's just a calculation issue they need to add, two ornamental trees, and the second is a minor correction to the monument sign detail to make sure the DDA leaf logo is added to the address panel. So there's a, what they're doing is they're also changing out the Meyer gas sign to a typical 15-foot-tall Canton DDA monument sign that I've got at the end of the package there, so they're including that in the sign, in the sign plan package. They'll be replacing that, so they can go on the sign. I've kind of recommended they might want to use a day-night perforated film over Culver, so Culver shows up, you know, blue or another color during the day, and then it can shine up white at night if they want it to be white, but the white, kind of on the off-white background really doesn't show up during the day. The address panel actually uses a gray perforated film over white plexi to get the white numbers at night and the darker colors during the day, so we're recommending they use a tip, you know, a similar sign concept for theirs if they want the white letters at night, so... But other than that, this is our typical Canton monument, they would just have to add the DDA leaf logo to the address panel for wayfinding. So other than that, we have the project sponsors and owners here tonight, if you have any questions about their project, but otherwise, it's pretty similar as to what you saw in January on the special land use, it's just all the details and landscape plans and lighting plans are there with it now.
Thank you, Jeff.
Chairman Green, they actually have good fish sandwiches.
I'm sorry?
They have good fish sandwiches.
Yeah, they do.
Hello, Derek Sessie. Good evening, my name is Ken Watkins with Architectural Concepts, and I think Mr. Gueye did a good job of recapping kind of all of the issues, and we are aware of the two minor comments about the signage, the multi-tenant signage, and the two additional ornamental trees that are required, and I have no problems complying with those.
Okay, thank you very much. We're just going to open this up to the commission. We've seen this before, so, I mean, it's not a new thing. Do you have any questions for the project sponsor? Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Thank you, and actually, one of my favorite things, and I might be missing it, is the outdoor seating areas at most Culvers. Am I, where is it on this one?
It's right at the upper-left corner of the building.
Where it says sodded lawn?
Just to the left of that.
Concrete patio.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, that's a concrete patio, okay. How much seating will that accommodate?
Typically, it could be anywhere between three tables, and each table has about six, anywhere up to six tables, anywhere between three and six tables. You just got to see how it's going to fit. Most of them have about three tables, or real nice tables, and you could fit six to it.
I mean, there's an opportunity for them to expand that into that sodded lawn area too, all of that's not required, so if they need, if they find a need to expand the patio area, they've got room to do that.
Okay, so there's, so to get to your, so there's the driveway around there, and to get from the seating area to your parked vehicle, so you'd have to come back south then along the building. Okay. Yeah, because the more tables, the better, especially if you have to socially distance. And so, like the other Culvers, it's going to be basically an iron gate or fencing around there, that I've seen?
I've seen it both ways. I've seen it without it and with it, I mean, whatever you guys would recommend, but I have a location in Shelby Township, but we don't have anything around it, especially because of landscaping, so the landscaping is what we typically have kind of around it.
I'm just thinking for, stop the little kids from running out into the parking lot where you got the cars driving around there. Okay, it said, Don, Greg, you want cheddar seafood, and most of us look forward to custard also in Canton, so I'm looking forward to that.
Mm-hmm.
That's all for you? Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the request for site plan approval on parcel number 058-99-0003-720 for Culver's Restaurant, including the private road, subject to correction of the landscape plan relative to foundation landscaping, and correction of the sign detail to show the DDA leaf logo in the, in the address panel of the multiple tenant sign prior to review and approval by the township board.
We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
And Chairman Green?
Yes.
And the next step for this, Jeff?
It'll also go to the township board once they make the corrections, so...
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some new business staff referral. Arbor Glen, which is a property located north of Warren and west of Ridge, do I hear a motion to send that to staff?
So moved.
Support.
All right, by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we've got a public hearing to be set for August 10th. Watuah, the Western Township's Utilities Authority, do I hear a motion to set that August 10th public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
By Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any late additions from staff?
No, that's it tonight. We have one other public hearing you set last week, so we have a rezoning scheduled for next month also.
What about our tabled thing from last time?
Yeah.
The thing we tabled last time?
That's next month's meeting.